It is Wednesday, November sixth, two thousand twenty-four. I'd like to call the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union Board of Directors meeting to border. For Richard, we'll call, I think I have notes of all the board members who are present. We have Scott McInnany, Christel, Katie, Ray, Glenn, Jeff, Leon, Jessica, and Sandy, with Jessica, Leon, Jessica, and Sandy joining remotely. Before we go into the agenda, the first item on the agenda is public comments. Before we get there, I'd like to have a motion to amend the agenda. And so that would, that reads, I would like to amend the agenda as part of the chair's report. So that would be item six. To talk about the superintendent hiring process and if deemed the best option, engaging with the Vermont School Board Association to help in executing that search for the next super, next superintendent. Actually, maybe requested there. We've been doing a little bit of, so actually maybe requested there. So now, may I have, have a motion to amend the agenda?
Like motion agenda?
So we have a motion by Jeff and a second by Christel. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And any abstentions? Next item on the agenda would be public comments. We do have a member of the public. Thanks for joining us.
Hi there. My name's Lori Mulhern. I'm a resident of Bennington and I came tonight to just sort of encourage the Lord to really explore through recruitment efforts to find a new superintendent and a superintendent, but at least one. Because of the challenges of managing our large district. I did want to also say that during this time, I, I really feel there's a need to encourage support for staff. Because without the, you know, the head of the organization sort of driving the bus, that puts a lot of insecurity out there. As well as, you know, decision-making is kind of challenging. So I really feel that, you know, that the just, you know, the SVSU should probably take a look at if there's any ideas how to support them more in the interim as well as students. I, I do also want to encourage SVSU to explore new ways to recruit special educators, VCBAs, because they are across the districts and school systems. And I really feel that, you know, those students could use more support as well. And, you know, until such time as the super, a new superintendent is hired, then a lot's going to fall on your shoulders. So a lot of people might show up here, not just me, to come sort of say, hey, how's it going? You know, and I do encourage you to, you know, maybe use a recruiter or other methods besides the association, because I know that everyone is trying to find staff.
Yeah, thank you so much. Sorry, it didn't mean.
No, that's okay.
No, thank you for your comments. And I, I mean, I think you probably, we're, we're, we're moving quick. Well, we're, we're going to attend. We have to move quick.
Yeah. Budgets and the legislature.
We don't always respond to public comments, but I will simply say that. We have to move quickly. We recognize that. Thank you.
And I would just say, if there's public involvement, just look out or, you know, feel free to reach out to perhaps kind of once we know more. Probably next meeting we'll have more information and we're looking for whatever they recommend. So.
Will you be having a hiring team?
Well, I figure that out. Yeah.
Got that. Okay.
To be determined.
Be determined.
Gotcha.
But we have certainly a process that, that is, that is given. Yeah.
But feel free to reach out if there is something, you know, we always, you know, the chair calls you to back. So yes, there's a hiring committee. Sense pains and.
I just encourage, you know, maybe, you know.
And we are going to be talking about this a little, a little later in the agenda. So if you want to stick around.
Oh.
Okay.
And thank you for.
Okay, item two on the agenda is finance. We have treasurer's report. It's in the packet. I need a motion to accept that report.
A second.
Moved by Glenn, seconded by Katie. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? We have item three on the agenda is policies. We have two to warn. The first one, item A is number one zero two five, public complaints about personnel. Any member of the policy committee like to speak to that?
Leon or myself?
I think Leon's just a public personnel.
I'm only here as a spectator. I'm not on SVSU.
Oh, okay, okay. That's true. That's what I was looking for, spectator.
Basically, to, to make it quick, when we cleaned up a little bit of the language, you know, uniting the elementary school district along with Arlington, Sandgate, a couple of small typos and changing a couple of, you know, basic words to the complaint. They see their review. And that was really it for public complaints about personnel.
There's no action needed for that one. And Richard, if I can just clarify, I called Leon's name out because I'm so used to seeing Leon for all school, all school board related items, and we have so much crossover, but that was a mistake. And so I am B on the agenda for under policies is number six, one, nine, zero, holiday observance and program policy. Any? Any comments there? Questions?
Anybody can move faster than me, feel free to. Again, merging the names. Change the mission statement, the goal of the supervisory to promote and foster understanding, recognizing diverse beliefs and promote mutual respect among people of different race, cultures, economic backgrounds, gender identities or religious beliefs. And that was that.
I believe that exhausts all we would need to do for policies this evening. Is that right?
I think the one one there is like, yeah, in the bottom of right to excuse the child. Sounds like the lawyer is still looking into that part. Richard, back to us. It's the last part.
Yeah, I close things out way too early sometimes.
Basically says right to excuse child. A parent or guardian of a student may excuse his or her child from classroom discussions or activities related to particular holidays.
Yep. That is being reviewed by the attorney for the SU. To be warned as well.
Okay, item four on the agenda is the consent agenda. That includes minutes, warrants, leave of absence, retirements, resignations, and nominations. I'd like to.
Do you want to approve the policies to one? We do have to approve them? I'll make the motion to warn both policies.
Well, certainly.
Ten twenty-five and whatever the other.
So a motion by Jeff and a second by Ray. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, now we'll move into the consent agenda. Minutes, warrants, leave of absence, retirements, resignations, and nominations. I would like to request that we move them all together and I will will make public note of two letters that are in there as part of the discussion.
I'll make the motion to move it with the discussion about the two retirements.
I'll second.
Okay. All those, any discussion?
I just have one question. I noticed in some of the hirings, it says, and Nicky may be able to answer this one. And one in particular that I, I'm thinking about. It says that the criminal background check is just pending. Can you explain to me a little bit about that, what that process looks like? So they're nominated to be hired with that pending. Are they able to go into the schools while it's still pending?
Yes, there is. It's a twofold check. We do a check here at the time of hire through the Vermont Criminal Information Center. We have the ability and access to do immediately and get immediate results. And that is what allows them to enter the schools and be in the building. It's the same background check that a chaperone for a field trip or something might, might fill out. They cannot be unsupervised with students until their fingerprinting results come back. So that's the second piece that they do. Is they receive fingerprint paperwork from us. They schedule their fingerprinting. They get their fingerprinting done. Return a receipt to us so that we know it's done. And then the fingerprinting results come back from that national search within the bands. It can be a couple of weeks.
So what happens if, let's say, someone has been charged but not convicted because it's going through the courts? And in the meantime, this whole process is going on.
My understanding, yeah, my understanding.
Second check because.
So it's a subscription service? Yeah. So everything we get is a subscription service, meaning not that like a magazine subscription, but we get updates if background checks change. So if we hired somebody who had something pending in the system, which would not result in a current conviction or anything on a background check, they'd probably have a clean check. We get notification that changes through VCIC. So we would be notified if somebody got convicted of something that we weren't aware of at the time of hire.
Okay.
Yeah.
As part of the discussion and given the, the nature of two resign, two resignations, letters of retirement that are within the packet, I wanted to take a moment to read both of those. We don't always read letters of resignation or retirements, but I think it, given the, given the level of the two, of these two positions, it's, it's prudent to do so. First one is Superintendent James Colkeen. It says, Dear Chairperson McInnany, I'm writing to inform the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union of my decision to retire from my position as Superintendent of Schools effective June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. My desire is to give the board ample time to conduct a search to find my replacement. I thank the members of the supervisory board for their, for the opportunity to serve as superintendent. I have been blessed to work alongside a dedicated and talented team. I wish them all the best going forward, and I also wish the students, teachers, staff, and administrators of, of the school districts within the super, with the supervisory union, all the best, especially during this period of transition. The second letter in the packet is from Assistant Superintendent Laura Boudreaux. It says, Dear Superintendent Colkeen, I'm writing this letter to announce my retirement effective June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. I'm honored to have served the students of the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union since my hire as a classroom teacher in June of nineteen ninety-three at the Corby Whitney Elementary School. I would also like to express my deepest gratitude for the SVSU for providing professional opportunities to support my leadership growth that have allowed me to support students, staff, and administrators in my roles as teacher, director of curriculum, instruction and assessment, MAU HS High School principal, SVSU homeless liaison, and assistant superintendent. I will truly miss collaborating with the talented members of the SVSU community. It has been a challenge. It has been a privilege to be a member of our team that fosters a common vision to imagine the possibilities. I am incredibly proud of all our, all of our accomplishments. Please let me know how I can help support with the transition. So wanted to read those letters and as board chair publicly thank both Superintendent Colkeen and Assistant Superintendent Boudreaux for giving us ample time to prepare and allowing us to get this process started, which we will talk, talk more about further in the agenda. So we have a motion in a second to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor?
All right.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, item five on the agenda is the, we had been starting to go down the process of the Vermont School Board Association Superintendent Evaluation. That is something that I know Sandy had been doing some research on as well as the policy that is around superintendent evaluation. And I wanted to open up the floor to, to let Sandy bring us up to speed on that. And then we can talk about the act of doing a superintendent evaluation, given the news that we were, we were given tonight. Sandy?
Thank you, Scott. So Glenn and I started under your direction to look at the Policy two six hundred, which is the Superintendent of Schools Evaluation and Review. And we were able to take a look at it, review it, reevaluate what we hoped would work for our superintendent's review and then submit it to be processed by the committee, the policy committee. That we completed in the end of August and it is under review, just came under review in November at the November policy meeting. So I just wanted to share with you that that piece of it is working and the policy committee is reviewing the Policy two six hundred. As for the evaluation of the superintendent, we did look into the Vermont School Board Association, having them do it. We were thinking that perhaps it would be transparent for all members and it would give us an idea of what and how the many players of our community are able to help us decide what we're, what our superintendent is able to meet his goals, not meet his goals. So the VSBO has a survey that they have based on national standards for educational leaders. And it includes, it would include the current goals that the superintendent has. It would be sent, this survey would be sent to all board members, all directors, principals, and of course, the superintendent to fill out. The superintendent would do a self-evaluation. It would be a rubric. The total process takes about five to six weeks. And the survey is open for two weeks to give ample time for stakeholders to complete it. It, the total cost for this is fifteen hundred dollars. And given that our superintendent has decided to move forward, I, I ask you, Scott, what direction you would like me to take? And, and the entire board, where do we move from here?
I have a perspective, but I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to skew it if there's other, if there's another perspective on the board.
I have a question. Would, would the eval, if he was, if the superintendent evaluation was to occur, but that happened within this year, even though our superintendent is retiring in June?
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
What's the role of the the SBA?
They oversee the input of the data. They will receive all of the surveys. They will meet with us in executive session to share their findings. They will meet with the superintendent. It is, it's an evaluation tool.
Sounds like they're a clearinghouse then. They gather all the information, report.
They have a structure and they have a structure. They have a process.
Yes.
I first, Sandy, I want to thank you for doing the research and, and the work needed for this. It, it's my pers, my perspective and my thought on this is that you would want to do a superintendent evaluation to provide critical feedback to the, to the, to the leader to make, make adjustments to him or herself that would help them be better and more efficient in their role going forward. And you would want to do it so that a person could get the constructive feedback that they need as well as positive feedback that they need. I think given, given everything that's before us, Superintendent Colkeen will be receiving a lot of positive feedback for the work that he's been doing over the last several, I mean, he's been with twelve years. Is that right?
Yeah.
Now, yeah, he's been, been with us a long time and especially a long time for superintendents. I'm, I'm hoping and I'm thinking that he's going to get a lot of accolades and thanks and that that will come in a way that will be meaning, meaningful to him. And I feel like our role is most, is best served right now thinking forward and finding and getting doing, doing all of the work necessary to put a new superintendent in place. And that the time that we would be spending on a superintendent evaluation could probably, would be more wisely spent. Hiring a superintendent so a fast follow can be an assistant superintendent who can work very closely with whomever we hire. That's my perspective.
I think I'd say the same thing. It looks like the, we'd have to do all this by March first. That's the old policy. So to do a superintendent evaluation and then hire in the same window, be too much, on top of budget.
I agree.
Yeah. So I think we, maybe it's nice. I think we put a policy in place for the next board because it's.
Policy for the next order, for the next superintendent?
Well, for the next, for the next process. For the next process.
Right.
Because it's been twenty eighteen since this was reviewed. So it's long overdue.
There were a few interesting points brought up last night that there, there might even be an.
Twenty eighteen, that's not true. All policies adopted twenty eighteen.
Policy.
Yes. That was pre at forty-six merger. So.
That there's things in the, in the evaluation review that could be negotiation points within the candidacy of the new tenant. Well, that's been one of the things that has come up is there's also parameters in which, and the parameters with which a policy, the evaluation must be completed in the superintendent's contracts. And it's in some cases kind of differs or is, let's just say not working in parallel with what's in the policy. What is in his or her contract needs to be in better alignment with what is in the policy.
It might be better to spend that little bit of time to clean up the policy, the contract before the new hire. So wherever we do hire, it's very clear to the board and the new hiree.
Absolutely agree with that, Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't hear any reference to this, to a more general solicitation of opinions from the community affected by the services and actions of the SU, which would be teachers and parents. I think that there's useful information out there. And I think you're paying fifteen hundred dollars for managing the process that seems to me to start with the premise that we, the people contacted will know everything that needs to be known about.
Sandy, it looks like you want to clarify something.
Well, I, although I understand what Ray is sharing, I believe that that is something that we're looking at in the policy and Policy two six hundred. And because it doesn't seem as though we're heading down that path, Ray, at least not for this year, it is something to consider in the future years.
But we want this policy cleaned up before the new hire.
Yes.
I think that's.
Absolutely.
Definitely that, but.
And I think.
My, my point of view is that there needs to be at least periodically a much broader.
Yes, like more often check-ins?
Like more check-ins?
Like more check-ins, like. Or cast it to a wider audience.
Cast to a wider audience.
Yeah. Yeah. I think, I think you all agree that, you know, more check-ins, more wider audience input would be like.
Yeah, I, you know, for this particular evaluation, given circumstance and the retirement notice.
I do welcome all of you to our policy committee meeting, which is the first Monday in December, which we will be talking about this. So please, if you're not able to attend, perhaps you could share some notes with us so that we'll have them for that discussion.
First Monday in December. What time do you know, Sandy?
Two one thirty.
Four thirty? It's December second.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Moving into the chair's report, obviously with the, the news that was delivered in this packet, we have a lot of work before us. It's going to require extra effort from everybody on this board to, to work through. It's also going to require us leaning on the expertise that is in this building and expertise that we can, we can have a discussion and expertise that exists elsewhere. And Nick's Human Resources Director, Nick Gault, and I spoke earlier this afternoon about a few options that we, we may have before us. And I wanted to give him an opportunity to review them with us and possibly take some action tonight to get processes started so that we can get this done quickly as has been already asked of us.
So one of the options that I'd like to discuss with the board, Sandy, I can send this to you digitally. The Vermont School Board Association, in addition to helping with evaluations, also offers a service, they call it superintendent search. This is available on the website. I just thought it'd be something to look at as we chat. This service, which you can see just from current status of the website, is currently being utilized by one other school district in Vermont, who is doing a superintendent search. There are five that we know of now that are actively searching. I've heard that number could be as high as sixteen of fifty-six.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. I can't remember the source of that number, but five right now are actively looking. We will be six that I know of. So it's going to be a busy year. The superintendent search feature, which I am learning more about, I, this is only my tenth year, so I've not been here since the superintendent's been hired. But from what I've learned here and by contacting them to get a little bit more information, it sounds like a worthwhile investment of our time and money. Essentially, they will help guide the board and the district through the entire process. Exactly how hands-on they are, I, I have to learn that and we have to learn that through conversation with them, but just from this overview and the extensive information they've shared with me via email, they are guiding and helping at every step of the way, right up until we make a selection and they forward that name to the Secretary of Education, a step I didn't even know existed. So, you know, accessing their expertise, they assign us a consultant that assists us with this whole process feels to me like a very worthwhile offering. They did provide pricing information, which was not too far off from what I would have guessed, twelve thousand dollars. It sounds like a lot of money when you think of, you know, obviously the, the gravity and importance of this search. I did discuss with Renee, we, we feel comfortable, we can with existing budgeted monies for things like advertising and other, other little pockets of money to, to cover that cost. So I'm still learning a little bit more about exactly what they do and what they offer. But one of the first things would be they offered to meet with the board and discuss the process. So that's something that can all learn together. I just think, I think this is something that, are we, are we capable of doing this on our own as a school district and as a, as an administrative team? Absolutely. I believe we are. I think we have the tools and the resources, but there's a reason this exists and there's a reason there are experts that focus on this full-time. And I think taking advantage of that offering gives us as a, as an SU.
I'd like to share that I went through this last year with RSU and went through the whole process and found them enormously helpful, you know? They think of contingencies that you do not. While we have a tremendous breadth of intelligence on this board, you know, having someone to hold our hand goes a long way. And we had different circumstances in, in RSU, but in the end, the consultant was fantastic. And every, worth every good twelve thousand dollars. I think we had a little different
need as we needed a, an immediate replacement or interim, shall I say.
I've been through this process with BSBA and and BSU. three or four times. And I, I'd agree with process. They can do a lot of the work that would be honors for the board to do. Given our discussion at the last board meeting. I think it's quite.
So, I mean, I, I, we put in here and we have action as, as, to start the meeting when we, when we started this, I said, action may have been requested. We do have the ability to field a motion that would, oh, Sandy, sorry. We can't hear you.
All right. Is that twelve thousand dollars for the superintendent and twelve thousand dollars?
Come closer to your mic.
She said a superintendent and assistant superintendent. This would be one search for one position. Um, my advice, and I assume they would echo this advice, would be focus on your superintendent search until it's done and then allow the superintendent board and, and team here to administer the assistant superintendent search as that kind of pairing, I think. It's essential that we have the superintendent to know the, the superintendent that will pair well, the skill set we're looking for. Um, so no, this would be, to answer your question directly, this would be just for the superintendent, no, uh, no service offered on the other search.
And I have a motion to authorize Nick to engage with the Vermont School Board Association further and start the process of enlisting their services to help us with the superintendent search.
I'll set the motion.
Second, the motion was um made by Crystal and seconded by Glenn. Any discussion?
Nope, unless Nick wants to do it himself.
I think we could, but I think we'll get a better result if we do this.
So we have a motion.
We have a motion in a second and we're in discussion.
Yeah.
So would the first step of it be that they come down and meet with the board first to kind of?
What they said was we, if they off, if the board authorizes us to enter into a contract, they would develop and issue that contract. Um, and then they would, uh, they would schedule a meeting to meet with all, um, to start.
Start the process. I would like, yeah. I think I'm trying to move this now because I'm mindful of saying, well, let's have them come down and talk to us about the whole process and we lose a month or two, because next month is December and then we're, we're, we're a couple of months behind and I don't, I, I don't want to be there, so.
With the anticipated vacancies too, I'm like.
Yeah, let's get this, let's get this party started. Um, Sandy.
Oh, what is it that Nick shared with all of you that I can't see?
It is just Sandy, it is the printout of their website with the superintendent search uh outline. I can email it to you right now and you can pull it up right up on your computer.
Thank you.
So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Those opposed? And any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you.
If that allows us to, to get started on this process most quickly and uh I appreciate your legwork today.
Thank you.
You know, this, this is fairly timely because people, people will be looking for jobs and looking for superintendents. Now doing it in some other districts.
Yeah.
Turnover happens December long, so availability, people looking for jobs and.
They're looking now.
They're looking now.
No, and I think it's, it's, it should be underscored. Um my level of appreciation, I'm sure I'm speaking for members of the board, um, that we have been given the, the amount of notice by Superintendent Colkeen. Um, it shows, shows the, the care he has for um the, the process and the uh, all the, all the stakeholders, be it students, staff, um, to allow us to get this process started and, and hopefully have there be some overlap with him and um whomever we hire, so. Very appreciated. Uh, item seven on the agenda is any other business. Do we have any other business? And item eight is F Y I enclosed in the packet. We have a budget status report, student enrollment numbers for November. Oh, that's to be posted. Um, and then we have uh, it's like a couple of policies. Five zero, five, five zero, three zero, tendence, administrative regulations and six, two, three, zero. Um, curriculum-based field trips, um, but that's, those are in the packet. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, my God.
I'll second it.
Made by, hey, seconded by Jeff. They're right on it tonight. All those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you, everyone.